Yes, James Schreier.
We do.
Dave Hartman.
I'm there.
Barbara.
Here.
Cindy Bynum.
Here.
Tom Turk.
Yep.
I approve the posting, which includes other collegiate leaders. College leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, and the first in justice for all. Motion to approve the agenda. Alright, do you have a motion to approve the school board of education meeting minutes on October 24th? Whoa, 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 sorry. Discussion, hearing done, James. Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
All vote yes as well. And a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes of October 24th, 2016. Second. Discussion. Hearing done, Jim.
I'm Steve.
James. Sandy. Barbara.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
All vote yes as well. I have a motion to approve general approvals and dispersals, so move.
Same.
Discussion. Hearing done, Jim.
Yes.
James. Sandy.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
All staying. Board President, um, I've really got nothing to report. It's fall season, the fall sports teams all did very, very successfully. Couple of just shy of state, but they did a great job. I don't know if you guys are going to talk about that. Football did excellent too, so yeah. Cross country state actually made it to state, which was excellent, so kudos to them. Um, I don't think I have anything else. How about you Randy, what do you got? The district administrator.
First of all, Principal Sepaties is gone. She's got her mother's hat on tonight. They have a meeting at M A T C and so she had to go to that and study the school board. I have been, I had my first meeting with the, uh, the teacher leadership. We're meeting monthly to follow up on some stuff, so I did that. And we're doing that and give out some stuff to talk about and work on, so we can meet once a month.
Alright, committee reports, employee relations.
Uh, we had a, um, a really great meeting with our support staff. They, um, they brought some, for some really good recommendations and made good information. And we're going to be looking at, um, um, sorry, my brain is, you guys can help me. Uh, we're going to look at like mentorship, we're going to be looking at, um...
Well, they had some good ideas as far as needs go, um, in terms of training and mentorships. Um, maybe some process changes with the lunch schedule and process helping out there. Um, just kind of a good discussion, open forum, um, for them to kind of talk to us to tell us what their needs were. Um, I think we're going to look further into the compensation model next time. Um, kind of correlating it with the teachers, all that kind of stuff that is future.
Alright, um, public relations.
That was a while ago too.
Yep.
We had some good discussion about...
Logos.
Logos, and narrowing it down, I think, to three.
But we worked out limited, so the logo discussion basically was we tried to narrow down the number of logos because it seemed like logos were out of control. There was vanguards from every different planet in, like, everywhere underneath, in every sport. And every sport had a different vanguard. We're lucky we didn't go back to the rocket. Um, so things, we also, so what we did was we said that basically there's going to be three different primary logos that the school will have.
The district.
The district will have. However, sports teams like baseball buy their own hats, basketball, like basketball buys their own shooting shirts and things like that, they're welcome to do with those what they like. Uh, we're not going to...
With jerseys and school affiliated, like our letterhead and that kind of stuff is going to be consistent.
Which is the vanguard of the horse, the vanguard, like the one we have outside, the frontier, and then the W H. So, we kind of narrowed it down to those three. Because if you go back and look through the dates and all the pictures and stuff like that, it seems like they have a different vanguard everywhere we go, so...
Um, also, I think the marketing class is going to help us out with the brochure possibly.
Yep.
So we'll see if we can save money, but also include them in on that, so that's in the works. Um, and also, um, discussed ramping up our website and the need for, um, just better communication, better marketing as a whole, especially with refer them coming up, so that's going to be discussed.
Alright, public input. None? Alright, moving on, fall sports update. Updates.
Alright, um, just to kind of give you a quick summary for what we did in the beginning of the school year in July. Um, myself, I sat down with all the coaches, middle school, high school, and we took on two initiatives this year. One, uh, make sure every coach, middle school, high school, CPR, AED, uh, first aid certified. W I A A rules state that you have to be by the end of school year for high school coaches, or you're not allowed to coach. Middle school, that was my offering to them and I, and it's kind of a mandate where they're, they're pretty much the only ones there a lot of nights, so we need them to be certified in, um, the AED training and the, um, first aid technique. So, we're working on those things. We've already had eight coaches certified, uh, through the Mezzo EMS and then we've got about, there's 23 more of us to go, and that includes Ike, who's the game manager, who's had quite a few things, and myself, and then the co-regular advisor, Kim Hauser, just to be one of them. We're looking to make sure that we're all certified in those. Um, and the other initiative we took on this year with the coaches, you know, each fall I come or in the winter and the spring, they ask me to come and summarize things to the board. And so my suggestion this year was, why not have these young men and women, that some of you may or may not know, some of you may or may not have seen them in action, um, to be honest, I didn't make it to cross country this year, that was the only one. I didn't make it to the banquet, so that's going to count for summer. But I wanted you to hear from them and also from our coaches at the middle school level, because I think it's important that you guys get a chance to hear from them, how these, their seasons went. So before we begin, uh, I'm going to read the middle school, the coaches, what they sent us, and then we'll go into volleyball, high school volleyball, and then I want to excuse those two young ladies to get back to practice, and then we'll go right down the line, the boys soccer, cross country, and then we'll finish up with football. Uh, from Mr. Wong, he wrote this year, we had a total of 16 runners participated in middle school cross country. One of our largest groups that I've ever coached, the team participates in five meets. The athletes work hard and we happen to have a number of talented runners that would place in the top 10 or 20 in some of those big meets. These meets are broken down into four events. It's the sixth and seventh grade girls, sixth and seventh grade boys, eighth grade girls, eighth grade boys. The true difference is it's, uh, the eighth, seventh and eighth grade gr- or I'm sorry, eighth grade boys, eighth grade girls are now running like the two mile race instead of what they did a year and a half, or two years ago, they changed it from. Eighth grade girls are the same as sixth and seventh grade, they always run a mile and a half. All eighth grader now two miles, all sixth and seventh grade meets are a mile and a half. So, um, they, that's how they split them up. They said, or he said, in a couple of these meets, we had a total of between 600 and, 650 and 750 runners. I usually don't like to point out individual accomplishments in the middle school athletics, but one of the runners, sixth grader Samantha Herling, who ran in the sixth and seventh grade race, won four out of the five meets and placed second in the other meet. She is by far the most gifted distance runner that I've coached in my 15 to 20 years of doing middle school track and cross country. In our last meet, there were 650 runners, boys and girls, from grade six through eight. Samantha placed 33 out of 650, beating all except one eighth grade girl and the vast majority of the boys. So, that was our cross country team. We do host one meet each year. Um, usually we don't get a lot of interest, they come out to Wisconsin Heights to run. This year I really went to six different schools that were interested, so it was a pretty big meet for us. It was very successful, we had a good time with it. Eighth grade coach Shelley Sheldon wrote, "Middle school girls volleyball had a wonderful season. We started the year with new uniforms that the girls and their coach love. A slow start to the year, but the girls were quick learners, progressing through and honoring, I'm sorry, honing all of the important skills of volleyball. We had a lot of fun during the season and I'm confident the girls will be ready for high school volleyball next year." And finally, seventh grade, and just so you know, this is from one of his players, so if I stumble on some of these, just go with me, because she wrote it and I was, I think her, who did this for me. Says, "The Wisconsin Heights Middle School Seventh Grade Volleyball Team has improved a lot over the past season. First of all, we have learned a six-two offense and learned what a serve receive rotation was. We also improved on the control of our passing and when it is an appropriate time to set. Our team learned that in order for the ball to go where you want it to go, you need to turn your body to the target. Our setting has also improved a lot. At the beginning of the season, most of us could not set with a little work. At the end of the season, we all can set the ball and do it successfully. Most of us could also not make over, make our serves over. As the season went on, we were able to get our serves over and in. We also learned that it is important to know how high your toss needs to be when serving the ball. That helped our serving go over the net also. Our team spirit was a great improvement over the season. The players on the bench would always be cheering for players on the court even if they made mistakes. We have learned that cheering on our team helps them to perform better. Our team also learned how to work as a team. We were able to learn everybody's highs and lows. By learning what everybody can do, we were able to help our teammates out when they needed help. Also, at the beginning of the season, we didn't call the ball and that was affecting the number of balls that dropped to the ground. Our coach kept track of the number of dropped balls and as a team, we then tried to make the numbers smaller. Also by talking, we were able to get three hits and our setters were able to get a second hit. Overall, in practice, in practicing all of these things, we're starting to become a more successful team." So, that is actually from one of these seventh grade girls. She summarized the season for me. So, that is middle school, ladies. I'm going to let you guys go ahead with the volleyball and any kind of season summary you have, and then we'll go on from there.
Okay, so our overall record this year was 31-6. We won three tournaments, the Monroe tournament, our home tournament, and the Lodi tournament. They were all pretty good tournaments, so that was good. Um, we tied for fifth at Middleton, which is a huge tournament, so that was good too. Um, we were undefeated in conference and regional champs. And we were sectional runner-ups for the fourth year in a row.
And, um, like some awards that we got this year, we had Kristen, no, Hannah Xander got honorable mention in all conference, Kristen Barman got second team, um, me, Helen, Kim Kramer got first team, and I got busy, so...
Good job, guys.
Yeah, free and goes. Next board, next board. Uh, high school boys soccer.
Alright, so we had a really successful, successful season. We, our overall record was 11, 2, and 3, that's two losses and three ties. Um, we placed third in conference, which could have been better. We didn't, we didn't lose except for one conference game, but we tied two, so... Um, we won our home tournament and in the playoff, we were regional champs, and then lost to eventual state champions, Racine St. Catherine's. We took them into overtime and they scored with four minutes left. And, um, they're just a really great team and we hope to do it again next year. I'm sure they'll do great. We had a lot of awards, I'll spare the names because I still had a few, but we had an honorable mention and we had two second meets, we had four first teams.
And I think, just to be clear, in overtime for soccer, in case you don't understand, I didn't know until I started explaining.
Go ahead.
So, overtime for soccer, um, if you end a playoff game tied, you get a 15-minute period and another 15-minute period. You can score in either period and the game doesn't end right there. Uh, if you score, then you have to finish that 15-minute period and then you have to do the second one. And then if you're winning at the end of those, then you win. But if it's tied after the two periods, you go into a PK shootout.
So, they lost with four minutes left in the second overtime right at the St. Catherine's, this quarter, so...
So you had to play the rest of the four minutes, but it ended 2-1.
2-1, so...
Awesome job.
Cross country, you're up.
Hi, um, I'm Lucas Giannetti and we had a pretty good year this year. We have four, well, we...
Better than pretty good, come on now. Better than pretty good.
We co-op with Barnabale and sort of one of our Barnabale teams today. Uh, we have, we, for our guys team, we had four people from Barnabale and we had seven people from Athens. Uh, and then as a team, we dropped, um, from our worst time to our best time, 28 minutes and 10 seconds.
Yeah, we, uh, did very well with all, all of our mates this season. We got first at Belleville and at Albany, and then we got second at Toddville and Fenimore. And Lucas, uh, won the, more than, what, more than half the races? A little bit less than half. Yeah, so, yeah, we did pretty good and...
Alright, in the conference, um, we got second overall, which we lost to...
Deerfield Cambridge?
Yes. Yeah. Um, Lucas got performer of the year, wasn't it? Yep. Um, then Willie, Coy, Christian, and Daniel, they were second team all conference and I was behind them. But we did pretty good and then we went to sectionals, then we went to state, and then we stayed eventually.
Yeah, we placed ninth as a team out of 16, had the state meet, and we got second out of 20 in our sectional. Uh, the only thing that beat us in our sectional is the eventual state champs.
Oh, you guys.
Okay, so for our girls team, we have four heights runners and three from Barnabale. At conference, we got third place behind Deerfield, Cambridge, and Marshall, and Cindy was the only person that made it on the second team all conference. And every girl ran under 25 minutes by the end of the season, which was our goal, like, starting at the beginning of the season. There were a few girls who had never been in cross country before and they came out and they were running like 30s and stuff, but by the end of the season, we got right down there. Uh, overall as a team, we dropped 37 minutes and nine seconds. And next year, we have really high hopes to make it to state like the guys did this year and the odds are looking really good for that, so we're excited.
Nice job. How far do you run when you're talking 25 minutes?
Um, it's a 5K, which is...
5K, okay.
And just to clarify, for conference, for, for all conference, for boys and girls cross country, it's based on where you finish. Um, so Cindy, you finished conference meet in what place?
Ninth.
Ninth place, so she ended up on second team all conference. And Lucas, if I'm not mistaken, this is the second time you were performer of the year. You got it last year.
I got co...
Co-performer of the year last year, this year, he was the, uh, male performer of the year for the conference for cross country, so nice job. And not to say the words for last year, but these two gentlemen are going to talk about football, so go ahead, gentlemen.
Okay, so this year, we ended seven and two with four bits, so a little better than the past seasons. Um, let's see, we only played a total of, well, it was seven games because of the two four bits and the two losses were mainly because we came out flat or kind of died off in the second half. Um, I think our defense was the best in the league, averaging just above like 17 points a lot per game, and we were scoring just over 35, I think. Um, I don't really know what else to say for the summary. I mean, it was, a lot of people really showed up this year. There was a couple seniors that came back out that I didn't expect to come out. Um, they really helped out the team, whether they were, well, everybody helped out, whether they were, you know, cheering us on on the bench or making plays out on the field and, I don't know, just being an all-star, I guess, I don't know.
Well, one, one thing I add to, the eight man doesn't have a playoff yet. It's 2018, I think.
Correct.
Um, so there's a jamboree which eight teams may get, and we would have qualified for it, but teams that are, have a school population of over 200 can't go, and so we're like 220.
223.
So, but yes, yep, so obviously we barely missed it. So there's like three of us that are a little too big. So we would have qualified, um, but we didn't, so that's kind of the end of the year tournament. Um, and then, I guess, awards, we had a bunch of stuff, I'm not sure if I'll be able to remember them all. Um, Ricky Williams got second team all conference. Sanders Ikors got first team. Jesse got first team. Alex got second team. I got first team on defense.
Tyler.
Yeah, first team on defense, second team on offense.
I think we're missing something. Cam Brown got honorable mention for special teams. Um, I don't know, we're missing someone, so...
I think I was runner-up for player of the year.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that. Oh, yeah, me and, we, I still don't know that person. Somebody got academic all states, me and, was it what? Me and Luke, so, yeah.
Nice job. Is there a tournament in 2018 now, like for a state tournament or what?
State championship will be sponsored by the W I A A.
Oh.
Uh, they have refused to take it on. A lot of it's the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association that's sponsoring the jamboree.
Yep.
And so, the W I A A has agreed, once you get to 32 teams, they will take it on, they'll do a championship. The only question that still lingers is have they put the parameters of enrollment on there? Um, there's a lot of argument back and forth whether that's happening. I can't answer that. My, my understanding was there is still that enrollment cap. However, you want to argue that you don't do that to anybody else in the football playoffs, they qualify, so how can you do it to eight man? But that is when they will sponsor the state championship for eight man, um, in 2018. So, a couple of years away, but in this year, from what I've understood, there are four Illinois teams going. One was near where we just, where we moved from. Uh, they've got a consortium of schools, like there's four more joining eight man. And then, the other understanding I have, and I'm going on December 7th for a conference meeting, I think there are four to seven more Wisconsin teams joining eight man. Um, so Illinois schools are going to stay separate, they'll, they'll play us non-conference. They don't want to be a part of our conference because they want to stay with the IHSA and not have two different affiliations. Uh, but as far as eight man goes, it sounds like we're going to be at that 32 number here within, maybe next fall or for sure by 2018. There'll be 32 teams, at minimum, probably playing eight man football, so... And our travel time, we're hoping to knock that down a little bit, but you know what? I think one parent, and I don't know who she said it to, but when a parent comes up and says, you know, "I'll travel three hours to watch my son play football because they're competitive," it's, it's probably meant the most to all of us is that we're competitive now, week in and week out, week in. We don't go home in halftime, you don't lose your crowd. I mean, one of our best routes this year is when our homecoming gate got canceled at the last minute. Had a great crowd, a lot of people stayed and just watched in practice, so... It's been, all of these young men and women have made the fall successful. Because it wasn't just the games they participated in, it's the fact that they supported each other throughout the entire school year, just everything they've done. So they, they deserve it, kudos. It's been a, it's been a fun fall, and I think it's going to transfer over to the, the winter and the spring, so it should be a good time for hikes for athletics. So, good job to all of you guys.
Tyler, what, uh, you know, it was a tough decision for us to go to eight man. And I know that there was a lot of questions before the season started. Can you guys tell me, how did the team feel playing eight man football and being competitive and, I mean, was it... Did you feel better this year than you guys did last year or, you know, playing eleven man and...
Yeah, and, um, I don't, I didn't, I mean, at the beginning of the year, there was a lot of people saying like, "Oh, this is stupid, it's not real football and everything." And then after our first game, they realized you're still on the field, under the lights, there's still ads and everything involved. Um, so I think once they realized that, people kind of got over the fact that there's three less people per side. Um, I personally, I, I had mixed feelings about it at first, but after, after our first couple of practices even, I, I started to love it and I, I, I liked the eleven man, but I enjoyed the season more than I did my first. And I, you know, I had, I had great teammates and a lot of fun my first pick, so I was, I was saying a lot.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for representing us.
Barnabale, thank you very much for... So, thank you all very, very much. You're free. You know, you're not, you're not... Alright, back to business.
Thank you, Brent, thank you.
I have an action to accept the resignation of Tony Farthing, school boys basketball coach with Banks of Services 2015. Discussion. Hearing done, Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
All vote yes as well. I have an action to move, or action to approve Bill Sullivan as a middle school.
So moved.
One, thank you. Discussion, hearing done, Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
All vote yes as well. Discussion, superintendent search process, okay, this is on here. Time to start thinking about who we're going to go with. Um, there's a couple of options out there, but Losby was kind of the number one since they're local, the regional, that's kind of what they do. Um, what are we thinking here with this? Anybody have any thoughts? Maybe I can interview you all about...
I got to interview three of them. Losby was by far my favorite.
And you interviewed them...
Through CISA. Through CISA too.
For...
For the director position now, and Gary Algar is leading and we're looking for a new director. For CISA.
Okay, do you know the other two, where they were?
Yep, it was, um, Exec Connect and Don Sullivan.
So, if we're thinking Losby, I think I have to put it, it'll have to be on the next agenda that we approve or re-approve with them. Do we want to do like a basic search or we do want to do involve community members? Kind of do an outreach where we have focus groups and things like that?
Focus groups is something that Losby will help with.
I think I'd like to have more important than less. So... And then, like when we talked, when we had talked, you said it's like how much and what are they going to offer? And that's the most important parts, you know, what are they going to offer? When it comes to search people, groups, they're, they're all, they all basically do the same thing. So, it's like, okay, what benefits do you have that are better to somebody else's and what's going to cost us? And as long as everything's competitive in the price arena and the benefits are there, it really, you can't lose with any, any one of the people, you really can't.
The one question I guess I want to pose first, before we start talking about Losby or anybody, is is that how we want to go? Do we want to do a search firm or do we want to do it ourselves?
Oh, no, we need to, we need to use somebody.
That's my, that too, I just make sure...
That's not something I don't think any of us have enough connections for that, maybe for Andy, but...
Yeah. Randy, you're going to do it for, for a search firm?
No, no, that's... No, my recommendation is you use that. And upon Martin, before Martin left, he had, he had set aside, he had allocated funds for that portion of it. So, he had made sure that there was funds for the search, so...
What I, I did contact, uh, Wasb because I, you know, I want to make sure I can get them here on the 28th anyhow, whether or not we were going to interview a couple firms or not. Um, we did, we were able to lock down the 28th. Um, they did send me, you know, the whole proposal, um, that I of course can send you. Um, generally, my experience with them in the past has been that they are generally the least expensive of them. And, you know, they, as Tom was saying, they're all pretty similar in terms of what they do, um, and what, um, and how they go about it, but, you know, as, I'll just read from the proposal, it says, it could... The W A S B search service can begin at 7,075 with a limited scope. Uh, however, comprehensive search will generally range in cost from 8,500 to 13,500, because there's some ads on, depends how many times and those kinds of things. So that gives you an idea of what, uh, might run. And, uh, it just, like you say, extraordinary advertising or candidate expenses may increase the overall cost. But to give you an idea of, you know, what we're talking about. And that money's been set aside, that kind of money for this search regardless of, of whom you want. So, as Cindy was saying, I think you dealt with the first one, you want to use a search firm and then, secondarily, if you want, you know, if you think you're going with Losby and you're at the point where you'd like to hear from him and them only, then I'll bring them in on the 28th. If you want me to bring in somebody else, you can do that, so you have, you know, so you can pick them on two or three or you tell me and I'll try and get them there. But I do have W A S B lined up for you on the 28th. And then I can send you the thing, so...
Does anybody want to say, want to hear from one? Does anybody wants to hear more than one?
They were the cheapest of the three that we interviewed for CISA.
I believe, I believe right, they pulled from the same pool.
I think just to kinda put it in perspective, whatever it was nine years ago or ten years ago, we hired Mark and used Stuart Boy. I wanna say that one started at around about five thousand dollars. And it don't hold me on that, but it, I know it was up there. So to hear numbers like this, uh, it's actually kind of encouraging because, you know, with inflation, you could have easily doubled or tripled.
And those are the numbers reported to CISA, which seems pretty accurate with the other two search firms, but much less actually.
Yeah, it's kinda, kind of a good timing that Cindy and the CISA part are through it as well. So kinda gotta have a start on us.
All right, so Losby it is, you on the twenty-eighth? All right, so seven point one, action to approve website development project not to exceed six thousand dollars however. This one is bizarre because it's supposed to be discuss possible action if you look at the recommendations on the actual, um, board docs itself. Again, it says action, so the genesis of this is basically the fact that when we were in the committee meeting, we were in PR, we were talking about updating the website. Bringing it back to the board, talking about, that's the original discussion of it. The trade-off would be the money we would save from doing the, um, the flyers and things like that, by cutting it in half and things like that, would generate ability to kickstart our website. Cause our website is very basic right now. It's nice, but it's the point, Cligen Scott has got so many other things to do that to maintain it. We just need to have one of the secretaries that's able to maintain it. So six thousand dollars would give us the opportunity to kinda kickstart it and get it going. So that's what we have, I guess we have to have an action on. So do I have a motion? Or do anybody wanna talk about it before, before we start?
Well, I'll make a move to approve six thousand dollars for the website development project.
I would second.
Discussion?
I think this is a great way to move forward. I think we need to put the money into the technology that we have and, and keep it up and make it a great place for people to stop.
Well, and part of that, when we were talking about it, was the fact that, you know, yeah, it's well said and done. It's great to use the Facebook page, but really people should just become into the website. I mean, that's really should be the focal point of what we do with our online stuff. That's where everything should.
All encompassing.
Yes, that's where everything should be, you know, and to make it a little bit more user friendly, which I'm not saying our efforts haven't been great and they're not. Cause when the original one was pretty basic, but it's become to now where that one, the current one we even had is very blocky. Not, not very user friendly. Yeah, it doesn't really link you anywhere. It's very hard to navigate. Um, again, so this will.
Visual stimulating, it's lagging and the same kind of thing.
Right. So, yeah.
And we also were talking, if we decide to go the route of sending out, um, even kind of postcards every month for events that's happening or even do a biannual newsletter, um, or four times a year or whatever, we're still saving a ton of money by not doing those bulk mailings every, even if they include the group that still wants the paper copies, we're still cutting costs.
Do we have current numbers on that, Randy? I think it was like fifty one or thirty-five one, thirty-eight one to buy email. But again, we're still gonna continue that indefinitely to make sure we get as many people as possible.
So I'm confused. Are we continuing on with the bulk mailing?
With the shorter bulk mailing, yes. With the, with the ones we're doing, which we cut in half basically. So yes, the same one we normally get, but the shorter version like we have now.
The shorter version of the newsletter?
Yeah.
Okay.
A short, yeah. The newsletter's continuing, yes. It's just that shorter version of it, which we've been sending up.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, and that was future talks after the referendum if we decide people change their minds and how we wanna do something.
And we still wanna do something further than that. Like we'll still look at that option to make sure we're still getting information, even if they don't want it.
Okay.
So, all right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well.
So, I'll try. Does he wanna close the door or anything?
It doesn't matter.
It's fine. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna try my best here to be loud. So for the purpose of clarifying the situation in regards to the possibility of questions being raised pertaining to the October twenty-fourth voting regarding the sixteen seventeen teacher compensation, President Isaiah Crowell recluses himself and turn the meeting over to myself, the Vice President, Cindy Byting. Um, so I ask for a motion to rescind the previous votes against regarding actions six point five, six point six, and six point seven on October twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. So I have a motion to rescind action six point five, department, motion to approve sixteen seventeen collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers, motion carry four point two.
No, but I think that, um, I think Robert's rules of order, I don't know as Sandy or I, since we were on the losing side, can make the motion to rescind. So just to make it clear.
So move to rescind.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Want me to?
Oh, if we don't vote to rescind it, then it goes through, right?
Yeah, but the last vote was not. Okay, I'll support it.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, so then I'll do a roll call to approve the rescinding of six point five. So Jim?
Oops, Steve.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Turk?
Yes. Yes.
Cindy, yes, and I will vote myself for yes.
It was either way.
All right, so for, um, six point six, um, do I have a motion to rescind, um, the motion that was approved for the supplemental pay?
Well, you've got, did, you made the motion for six five, six six, and six seven?
Right.
Or, correct?
Okay, so actually that didn't go down. All right, so we rescinded everything, yes.
Well, just clarify one.
What did you rescind for?
Or were you just?
Oh, I had read six five. I didn't mean six six.
Okay, and my motion on here. Was six the wrong?
Okay. It's kinda weird how it's written out here for me, so. Yeah, I, they wrote it out for me to read. All right, so it was all three. All right, so then it is also requested that the situation be clarified, finalized by, by the consideration of the following motions. Um, so the first motion is to approve sixteen seventeen collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers.
I will make a motion for seven point three, seven point four, and seven point five.
I will second.
Any discussion? Two approvals, yes. Any discussion?
I just wanna, um, having lived through quite a few negotiation sessions and having lived through Act Ten in two thousand eleven, I, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Employment Relations Committee. Uh, the, the amount of time you spent, uh, the concern that you showed and, um, is, is just something that teachers and staff appreciate. They may not say that, but they do appreciate it. And even in this time of, of anti-union, um, there's still board members who, who care about their livelihood. So my deep appreciation to you three.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else? All right, so, um, take a vote, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
No.
Barb?
Yes.
Tom?
Oh.
And I will vote yes. All right, do you wanna let, I do a no. They're like just sitting, they're like just sitting.
How long are we gonna keep them off?
Just a point of clarification. Tom, let's see, what do we have against the?
Same thing I had about it the last time.
I wasn't here to hear it, so.
Okay, well, let's move on.
No explanation?
Nope.
With all the hours that they put in, just to say no without an explanation?
We explained in the meeting.
All right, moving on. We have an action to approve Janelle Hoggie and Susan Escola as volunteer high school girls' basketball coach for the twenty-sixteen season.
So. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Uh, Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. District calendar, or district business, the calendar. All right.
I know mine's.
Why is my internet not moving here? Walking on the internet here. Come on now.
Mine's dead too.
Well, this would be a bad time.
Yep, yep, everybody must be trying to get the calendar at the same time.
Yep.
All right, well, we needed to talk about the calendar briefly. We're looking at blackout dates. If there's anything everybody's dead set on, we should have or shouldn't have or when we should do it. Um, this is the time of year we need to start working on next year's calendar to make sure it gets finalized. Um, it's not always just as easy as putting last year's calendar over the top of this year's calendar. Maybe because of the date changes. I'm sorry, that's not what I meant. As far as like timeliness and stuff like that.
It's coming.
I got mine.
It's coming.
I got mine.
It's just how it goes.
So the school calendar, this is like the first one we wanna talk about?
Nice. So I'm just waiting on my calendar.
Well, something's actually supposed to come on.
Yes.
I tried to lay out, um, a discussion for you based on what sometimes in the past the boards that I've worked with have wanted to talk about. And, uh, it seems to be commonality here than what I was used to in the past, so it's, it could be a variety of things.
I got right up here.
I guess the first, the first thing in, um, seventeen eighteen is gonna, a moot point in terms of, I guess the question is, you know, Friday, September first, September first falls on Friday. Labor Day is on Monday. I think we start on Tuesday would be my suggestion.
So hard to bring students back for one day.
Yeah, it just is a little goofy. And if you look at it, then what it allows us to do, you know, we'll have staff come in uh, August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, usually have four days, so they can have the Friday as they see fit. And then the kids, um, oops, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong calendar. It would be better if I get it right. Twenty-eight to thirty-one, and then the kids will start on the first. So if that makes sense to you, then as I talk to the other groups, we'll kinda make that clear. So then, spring, spring break, you guys probably know history better than I. I know the trend is to somewhat ride along, pick a week and be done with it. Um, rather than try and ride with Easter, you know, and Easter is, is early, so to speak, this next year. And then the year after that, it's really late. And the idea was why do you have kids, you know, put it around the nine week mark or something? Let everybody know when it is and, and deal with it. If you feel the need, you have to deal with Easter weekend, deal with it somehow.
So Easter is April first.
So, and for, I, I, rather arbitrarily, well, in seventeen eighteen, the last week of March catches Easter weekend. You're right, it's April first. And then if you flip to eighteen nineteen, that's a little goofier. Easter's later.
Yeah, when is Easter?
The twenty, the first, or in two thousand seventeen, the twenty-ninth.
Oh, yeah, twenty eighteen is the twenty-ninth of March?
Uh-huh.
Easter's in March?
Next year.
April, April twenty-first.
April, oh, okay, I'm lying.
April first and April twenty-first.
Yes. Next year it's April first.
Eight, two thousand eighteen.
Year after it's, it's twenty-first.
Gotcha.
So my understanding is that traditionally you've done some things with Good Friday if it doesn't fall on your spring break. The, the gist of it, like in eighteen nineteen, if you have a no school day, then obviously you gotta go a little later in June and that's what backs it up, so. I don't know if you have any strong feelings about it or not, and then we may hear different from the staff, but I know the usual discussions are around trying to travel or get back or whatever, and you just can't beat it. You know, unless you're gonna take even more time off. The airline thing now is, any of you traveling, unless you go on Tuesday or Wednesday, you can't afford it anyhow.
Well, Jim won't remember this. Every time we discussed calendar, that was my biggest thing, is try to keep spring break away from Easter as much as you can to save money. Cause travel is so expensive to try and do it on or write about Easter. But it makes no difference to me.
There's a lot of, uh, small, about a tweaking that we can do, but we're going to get out around June tenth, regardless of anything that we do. Um, when you have to start after Labor Day, it, it, there's not much we can do.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate that Randy and, and other staff members and administrative team are involved too, because they would know better than certainly me, than what the needs are of the children and the families that they serve, so.
So I'm hearing we're all okay with the spring break stuff. It, staff's got some better ideas. I haven't consulted them or talked to them a lot. I thought we'd come here first. It's, I could say I'm used to some more firm parameters sometimes. And then one of the trends is trying to somehow align your in-service or whatever with the holidays. And generally it's not an issue, except as Jim alluded to, when we backed up school, your semester doesn't hit Martin Luther King Day that well. And, um, so, you know, I guess as I laid out there, you got a couple of options. And you could have different length semesters. It doesn't matter much to the lower grades and, and since we're in a seven period day, you're as comfortable with eighty-five days or ninety days. You don't have to split it in the middle. You know, and so I guess the question, you know, as I laid out, is if you wanna try to do that, then I, I would defer to some of your feedback on, in terms of, you could do a Friday, Monday thing, or if you wanted to nail Martin Luther King as a non-school day for families or whatever, then we have to do a Monday, Monday kinda thing. And, you know, I don't know how we feel, or how parents would feel about a Monday off for no school on Martin Luther King and then no school the next Monday because of, you know, semester work day. Or if you skip Martin Luther King and you try and go Friday, Monday.
I personally don't think that any parents actually care as long as they have planned for it. It's the underlying things that are much more difficult. Just federal, pretty much.
Is that becoming more the trend, Randy, is the federal holidays, is?
Well, I think, I think.
To be viewed as something other than.
I think people can appreciate it because, you know, there's some family time if you do have that. I mean, you start to wonder who has holidays anymore, but, you know, if people do have holidays, you know, it's nice to have the kids do it. Then I've got parents say, heck, no, it's a holiday.
That's what I just said.
I'm gonna send the kids to school. But.
True.
But then on the other thing, the Martin Luther King Day thing, you know, is, is a contemporary social issue and.
Yeah.
And sometimes the absence of it. It's, I've been involved both ways, you know, with.
It's an in-service day, I think it's fine.
You know, so. As Tom was saying, if you don't think there's some big kickback, then you could kinda do two birds with one stone and say, grab it. Put it on the holiday, we'll have two Mondays off. The next year it falls pretty slick anyhow, I remember.
I'd much, I'd much prefer the two Mondays.
And then you, and then the other in-service, you're lining up with. And then you, and then the other in-service, you're lining up with President's Day, which is not a big deal in Wisconsin compared to the tourism business, it's a big deal. And then Columbus Day as well is not that big a day, but it's the same kind of thing. If we're gonna pick a day, why not throw it on holiday?
All right.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thanks very much.
And then graduation, actually it isn't a big, usually it's a kind of, it gets kind of controversial with like the kids end on a Monday and you gotta wait six days to graduate, get all, get a little jumpy. But these next two years, that's pretty tight. Graduation would, my understanding is Sunday after, so it'd be like the 9th or the, whatever these days are. 10th and the 9th, sound like a plan?
Sounds good.
Yeah, because last year we made it a long time, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, people were saying, it's a little odd.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's still, you know, we still have some communities around that are letting seniors out early. And so then it gets to be a little more controversial. Frankly, you're gonna see a lot of graduations, I think you see a lot of area districts fighting not to come to school that second week. And I think we'll see a lot of graduations as late as the 7th. Because we'll get, I know, you know, if I were back in Delville doing this, it'd be, we'd be pushing that second week. And then, you know. Well, then as, I think as Jim was alluding to, we can let the various, the administrators and the supports and employee groups take it, kick it. They can tweak it. And this is helpful in that at least there's a parameter. I'll meet with those groups, I'll bring you something solid, maybe in the summer you can just approve it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, action, do I have an add motion to approve, open or open request, alternative request?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Although yes as well, set committee or board meeting dates. All right, so the 28th, 6:30, is Wasby coming in during the meeting or before, or what do we think? Actually, I think it's during the meeting, I suppose. We also, we, I would like to have a, well, we talked about it, we'd like to have a curriculum meeting before Christmas, if possible, and a policy meeting before Christmas, if possible, so I guess that kind of falls under the next two meetings.
And we need another employee relation.
What do you decide?
We decided no.
Grant topic, yeah.
All right, so do you want to do curriculum first and then policy, if possible, until December? All right, so what do you think about the 28th and, um, 5:30?
Um.
Or 6:30? Okay. So November 28th, 5:30 for curriculum, and Dale will hook up with you about that.
Cheryl, are you good with finance?
Are you okay? And then December 12th at 5:30, we'll do policy. Yes. 5:30. December 12th at 5:30 for policy?
And then curriculum?
Yep, just those two.
Is the 28th.
Is the 28th.
At 5:30?
Yep. All right, any upcoming district events, when you're going on, everybody? All right, do I have a motion? All right, I gotta load this thing up here. Oh, yeah, we must thank the FFA for the car rentals and stuff like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All that great trip. All right. They had a great trip?
Yeah.
They had a great trip, thank you, yeah. Past tense, it's long overdue. All right, here we go. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 from CC1 CC considering the employment promotion compensation on performance evaluation data of any public employer in which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise a responsibility and considers student records under Wisconsin statute 18.125 and 34 CF Bar Part 99. Where when the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned.
So moved.
Yep.
Notice I uninterrupted that one?
You did, because you know I would have to start over. I would just keep starting over. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
James. Discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well.